Okay, great. So it looks like everyone's here and we can stand and begin the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance
to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. And we are going to begin tonight with our accolades to honor our retirees, Teachers of the Year, Support Staff Persons of the Year, and our students and families. Normally, we would have a celebration in person, and we're unable to do that. So we are hoping to be able to do that in the fall at some point, so that we don't, so that our amazing retirees and teachers and staff do not, do not miss out on being celebrated, which they so deserve. Thank you. So with that, Adam is going to read those. Have you got those, Adam?
I do.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. So first, I'd like to acknowledge, we have four teachers who are retiring this year. We want to thank them for their years of service to the Bristol-Warren Regional School District and all that they have done to provide an excellent education and educational experience to the students and families. So first, we have, and I, if, I would invite people to unmute and applaud it if you would like to do so, Deborah Allen, Speech Language Pathologist at Hugh Cole. Next, we have Susan Carlson, a Special Education Teacher at Mount Hope. Next, we have Mary Hanley, First Grade Teacher at Hugh Cole. And next, we have Arlene Vachelli, a Fourth Grade Teacher at Hugh Cole. Next, we have two administrators who are retiring this year. And like the teachers, we thank them for their invaluable contributions to the Bristol-Warren Regional School District. Firstly, to acknowledge Rosemary Burns, Assistant Principal at Kicking Mew at Middle School. And next, the, the rock of the Administrative Business Office for many, many years, Bernadette Emery. Now, we'll move on to the Teachers of the Year. I hope many of them are here. I can see that at least some of them are here. And I'd like to say first, each year, we have the honor of celebrating the many teachers and support staff who do extraordinary things on behalf of our students, our schools, and our district. This year, the following teachers were nominated by their schools. Please join us in celebrating their dedication to the profession and commitment to their students. First, from Colt Andrews, Kristen Correa, Special Education. Next, from Gitarras, Shelley Goudreau, Reading Specialist. Next, from Hugh Cole, Michaela Ferreira, Special Education Intensive Teacher in Grades Two through Five. Next, from Rockwell, Amanda Lawler, Fourth Grade Teacher. From Kicking Mew at Middle School, Nicole Daniele, Connections Program. And from Mount Hope High School, Laura Cabral, the Library and Media Specialist. Our sincere congratulations to each of these educators. All of them are truly deserving of their recognition tonight. The principals from these schools provided countless examples of how they contribute to each school's success and why they are valued members of the school community. From this list of outstanding educators, a District Teacher of the Year for 2020 was selected by the District Administrative Team and School Principals. After much consideration, the District Teacher of the Year for 2020 is Nicole Daniele from Kicking Mew at Middle School. Congratulations, Nicole. Very well deserved.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. We have a few kind words in addition for Nicole. Ms. Danielle, Ms. Daniele works in our Connections Program. The Connections Program has some of our schools' most at-risk students. These students exhibit high anxiety, depression, and behavioral issues. They have also had a history of underachievement and may have lost the belief that they can be successful in school. Ms. Daniele has many skills as a teacher, but her two greatest are her ability to make connections with students and families and her work ethic. In both these areas, she is remarkable and critical in helping these failing students believe in themselves again. One more round of applause for Ms. Daniele, Teacher of the Year.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. The next item on the, on the agenda is for the Support Staff Person of the Year. Each year, we also look forward to recognizing our amazing support staff. Our school and district secretaries, clerks, custodians, maintenance staff, and teacher assistants are the backbones of our educational system. They're behind the scenes, keeping our schools and program going, ready to support teachers and administrators in any way possible. This year, our administrative team recognized the following support staff. First, from Colt Andrews, Maggie Almeida, Teacher Assistant. Congratulations, Maggie. Next, from Gitarras, John Milhames, Custodian. Congratulations, John. Next, from Hugh Cole, Corinne St. Pierre, Teacher Assistant. Next, from Rockwell, Manny Gallego, Custodian.
Hey, Manny.
From Kicking Mew at Middle School, Liz Held, Teacher Assistant. From Mount Hope High School, Mike Santos, Maintenance. And from the District Main Office in the Oliver Administration Building, Catherine Brown, Administrative Assistant to Superintendent, and lately doing double duty as Secretary to the School Committee.
Thanks, Kate.
Each of these individuals contributed immensely to the building, and their contributions were well noted. Each staff member plays a critical role in supporting the education of the Bristol-Warren students. Thank you all for the many ways you support students, teachers, school, and district leaders each and every day. From this list of outstanding support staff members, the District Support Staff Person of the Year for 2020 was selected by the District Administrative Team and School Principals. And after much consideration, the District Support Staff Person of the Year is Kate Brown, Administrative Assistant to the Superintendent. Congratulations, Kate. Well-deserved honor.
Thank you very much.
Now, a couple of additional kind words about Ms. Brown. She serves as the Administrative Assistant to the Superintendent, responds to numerous parent concerns, and is a sounding board for staff and supports countless administrators each day. Her sense of humor and positive interactions are welcomed by staff, parents, and the community. So we could do one more round of applause and congratulations for Kate Brown, Support Staff Person of the Year. Now, you're welcome. I will turn it back over to Chair Schofield.
Thank you, Adam. Congratulations to all of you. And it's been such a pleasure knowing most of you. And these awards are so well-deserved. I look forward to being able to celebrate with you all in person at some point. But thank you so much for all the hard work you do and just everything you bring to our district. It is truly, truly appreciated. I want to thank the students and families of our district as well, because you too are so deserving of recognition. I want you to know how valued you all are as members of our district community. I think this year, maybe more than ever, you were truly our partners in education. I know we use that term, but it really, really seemed to come to life beginning in March. So thank you for supporting your children and each other, for making distance learning in Bristol-Warren what, what I would call a real success. I know it had its ups and downs, for sure, but I think we really built something strong and something that I think is not only valuable, but that we can build on from here, which will be very beneficial for the district and for families and students and teachers. So a big, giant, deep, and sincere thank you to our students and families. And I, that's it. Thank you. I hope you have a very restful summer. Okay, and now we can move on to public comment. Kate, did you see any come through?
Madam Chair, thank you. I'm gonna ask people if you can, if you're interested in making a public comment to raise the digital handprint. And if you don't know how to do that, you can also unmute yourself and state your name that you are interested in public comment. I do not see any hands raised. Does anyone else see any? Did I miss someone? Okay.
I do not. I'm going back and forth from page to page to double check. Okay, thank you, Kate. So with that, we will move on to the approval of minutes for the May 21, 2020 School Committee Virtual Meeting. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, a motion made by Mr. Bradshaw, seconded by Mrs. McBride. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Next, may I have a motion to seal the executive session minutes from this evening, June 22, 2020?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. McBride, seconded by Mr. Ramos. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Our next order of business is our Consent Agenda. I am going to, our, our first order of business under there is Approval of Contracts. I'm gonna pull each out separately, and we will vote on each one individually. The first is the approval of the contract for, recommended by the Superintendent for the Assistant Superintendent.
Motion to approve, Madam Chairwoman.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Our next is the First KMS Assistant Principal.
So moved.
Second.
Can I, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And all opposed?
Aye.
You. The next is the other KMS Assistant Principal. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Approve.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Bradshaw. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Next is the Director of Digital Learning.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. And the next is the Hugh Cole Principal.
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion made by John and seconded by March. Did he get it?
Sure.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, thank you. Mr. Saviano?
Yes.
Would you like to read our, our first official recommendation on there? Six B. I should have had you read the contract, but.
Yes. That, that was, is that Recommendation S. 2020-16, that the School Committee, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, recall certified personnel.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
A discussion. Any discussion on it?
You can. Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
That would be the next move, right?
I wasn't sure, because it's under Consent Agenda. We generally don't have discussion under Consent Agenda. Marian, would you weigh in on this one?
It's under consent, and you didn't remove it from consent, so there's usually no discussion.
Thank you, Marian.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Moving on, Mr. Saviano, to Superintendent Recommendations and Issues.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Recommendation S. 2020-17, that the School Committee, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, and supported by the Policy and Curriculum Subcommittee, approved the Second Reading of Health and Wellness Policy, JHCG.
So moved. Kate, did you get those? I did not. Motion and the second? Okay, discussion? Okay, I saw Mr. Bradshaw and then Mrs. Reish.
So, good evening. Thank you. You know, I apologize for not maybe having some of this discussion during the first reading many, many months ago. But I did want to have a discussion this evening a little bit. For the most part, I understand and, and agree with the intent of the policy. I do have some clarifying questions, though. So if you'll have a few, if you'll bear with me. I apologize again. I'm looking on page three, under C, for the School Meal Program. And I'm assuming that we are using USDA dietary guidelines because of our federal funding that we receive. And so, in order to receive federal food funding, we would need to use USDA. Though, I know maybe the USDA is a little bit behind, because I think a lot of science is now moving towards low-carb, no sugar, rather than low-fat. And I don't know if there's really any wiggle room for us there. That was loud. So, so I, I think I saw some heads nodding that, yes, the, it's USDA federal funding, that sort of thing. The other, so now I'm looking at page four, Delta One, Competitive Foods and Beverages. On the, the first two bullets under that section talk about USDA standards require that foods. And the first bullet says, have a whole grain as the first ingredient. And the second bullet says, have the first ingredient be a fruit, vegetable, dairy product, or protein. So I'm curious as to which one is supposed to be the first ingredient.
Just. If I can jump in on that, that should be stated in a disjunctive with ors?
Oh, okay. So it'd be a grain product with the first grain, or have the first ingredient a fruit and vegetable, or be a combination that has one quarter each? Okay, that, that makes more sense. Thank you. The other question that I had was regarding the policy as a whole, and I know the, who, who makes up the Wellness Subcommittee? We have students, I think, and, and district personnel, and parents, and teachers, and community members, I believe, as well, right? So, and I'm assuming this policy went through all of them, and they all got a chop. But I'm concerned about some of the kind of other effects that the policy has. And again, I understand where the policy is coming from. But if I, again, if I'm at, on page four, D1, during the school day and up to one hour after school, shall only sell foods and beverages that meet USDA standards. So does that mean that the KMS Community Service Bake Sale that occurs right after school at KMS can no longer happen, because they're selling maybe cookies and donuts and other things that, that as a service organization, they're looking to raise money for? So, or, or does that fall under food fundraising? So I'm concerned that some of these might be excluding things or contradicting other, other things.
Mrs. McBride?
The rule has been that an hour after school, no, nothing that doesn't meet the guidelines. You can't have a bake sale at school.
So I'm looking, I have the current JHCG, and I don't see that one.
So, Brian, I think to follow on what Mrs. McBride just said, the old, the current version of the policy has not been updated to reflect changes to state requirements that are reflective of what Mrs. McBride just said. So we've been following the state requirement that you not have anything up to an hour after school that doesn't meet FDA guidelines already. And this, this aspect of the policy is being amended in order to comply with, or to not comply with, but be consistent with those state guidelines.
So, but again, those are guidelines, not requirements? Or are we breaking state law by holding a bake sale, the community service group holding a bake sale after school?
We've had a lot of discussion around this particular point. And I know that it depends on, well, it doesn't really depend. We've been trying to figure out how do we enforce these. I do know, as having a student that just completed their go at KMS, that there are a lot of educators that reward kiddos with candy. So again, how do we enforce that? These are, these are tricky things. And I think that's kind of the guise of the wellness policy as a whole, is to hopefully sort of make parents, teachers, staffs, administrators, school committee members aware of the expectations that we have for our schools and for our guidelines. That was a big concern that we, that we spent a lot of time discussing during policy and curriculum. So I think, in, in a way, it is aspirational, but we have to figure out how we can give our aspirations some teeth without being complete buzzkills and taking away all the pleasure.
Right?
But it's our job to provide healthy food for our kiddos that are the best for helping them stay alert and active and be good, healthy citizens. So it's a, it's a very valid point.
Mrs. McBride?
I think it also has to do with the contract we have with Chartwell. Because, because the expectation is that children will purchase food from Chartwells and not from, from any other group. So I think that has, that is in there somewhere.
I think you're, I've looked at those details, but I'm pretty sure you're correct.
So that, so that means, so does that mean that, okay, so then I'm gonna go to the next, my next comment.
Okay.
Which is at the top of page five, so it's probably also part of Delta One, last one. We talk about it's encouraged that food and beverages offered or sold at school-sponsored events during and outside the school day meet the nutrition. And then we talk about that they should meet district guidelines for smart snacks in schools and that sort of thing. So that leads me to believe that this would be the concession stand at the high school football games. So, but is it because of the, the wording is that it is encouraged and that food and beverage is provided by classroom teachers, district personnel, or outside provider should meet guidelines? Does that mean that it's not a requirement?
Correct. As far as I understand it, that's correct. There was, that was one of those sort of sticky points. Some folks that had helped us review our wellness policy, including Karen Weatherhill at Rhode Island Healthy Schools, would prefer we have stronger language in here as a means of sort of forcing our hand, I think, in keeping Chartwells in check, which I don't necessarily think is a bad thing, and also providing more structure to what we expect for our kiddos and for, for administrators or in our staff. But I think it, having it be strongly encouraged instead of not permitted, I do think is where, where, what we landed on as a way to, sort of like my discussion around teeth. We have to figure out how we can implement these things, but we do want to have wiggle room and not have it be like, hey, you violated the wellness policy.
Right.
I think it's, it's an aspirational document. I do want to make it as enforceable as possible since it is so gosh darn big and unwieldy. These are some things that we need to pay attention to. And I think this is part of the reason why, when you look at the statute of the Wellness Committee as a whole, that we have to update this document relatively frequently. I can't, I think it's every four to five years, if I'm not mistaken. So, because these things change, and we figure better ways to sort of enforce and also FDA requirements or USDA requirements, as you mentioned. So if I missed anything, Dr. Santa or Adam, please don't hesitate to correct me or jump in.
I liked the term aspirational. And I would also say that the updates to this policy were intended to be educational, in that we want people to understand what healthy snacks are and that they are doable. It's just a shift in mindset. We also took the time to clarify terms and to organize the information, so people could clearly see what the requirements were around certain areas. So it is aspirational. We did try to provide some flexibility and language where we could, but at the same time, holding true to the, to the tenets of the nutrition guidelines.
Okay, thank you. So when we get to two on five, and we start talking about food fundraising, I know some schools do like a soups, like you can, like a blunt soup order, and they do, they sell soups and that sort of thing. So, again, we're going back to change in philosophy. So schools may permit the sale of foods and beverages as fundraisers that don't comply under two circumstances, that it's sold by pupils of the school, and the sale of those items take place off of school premises, okay? And that items are sold by pupils of the school, and the sale of those items take place one hour or more at the end of each school day. So do we see any fundraisers, any additional fundraisers such as that being impacted? Was there any discussion around that of like, I mean, how do you, come, come within the hour after school to pick up your soup? Can we no longer do that? Is it now come on the weekend, or come at six o'clock in the, in the evening to pick up your soup for the soup fundraiser? How, how do we work those things?
That's a good question. I didn't think about soup. I think partially because, in my mind, it fell under sort of healthy, even though it wasn't a Chartwell's thing. That isn't something that kind of fell into our discussion, but certainly something that we need to talk to PTOs about. And how enforceable is that? How unreasonable is that to expect families to not be, you know, to amend their schedule? So those are important things to think about. Thanks for bringing that up. I don't have a clear answer for you at this juncture. I don't know if Adam has anything to weigh in on about, or Dr. Santa?
And I, and again, I apologize for putting everybody on the, on the spot. I should have probably had these three months ago or four months ago. Sorry.
No worries.
I just, on the soup fundraiser, I mean, it, it certainly seems possible that, based on what, how you just described it, Mr. Bradshaw, that, that there's two things. One, it seems possible that at least some of the soups might comply with the guidelines. It's hard to say without knowing the specific food item. But, but two, you know, if it's an issue of when you pick up your soup, this is, I don't see that there would be anything in this policy that would prohibit picking up. It's just the, the sales of it, right? So if, if they were selling it on weekends, but then it was available to be picked up during the school day and then brought home, I don't think that that would be inconsistent with what the policy says.
Agreed. Thank you.
So, again, only a couple more, couple, three more comments, questions. Under three, the distribution of candy by staff, families, or students in the classroom and on school grounds is prohibited. So what are the parameters around that statement? So, so if I'm, if I'm, if I, if I come, and I know it happens, and maybe we have a policy that says you shouldn't do this, but I bring four Tootsie Rolls in my lunch, and I go, here, Johnny, here, here's- and I go, here Johnny, here Sally, here Timmy, here's some Tootsie Rolls. Is that distribution of candy by students on school grounds? And is that now a violation of this policy?
Not.
So. No, it doesn't say selling. It says distribution.
So, can I just weigh in? I actually think that this is, what we want is, we don't want students, we, we don't want anybody distributing candy. And can I just tell you in a, in a quick sense, why? We, we may not know a student is going to have an allergic reaction to something in the candy. Maybe they, maybe they were diabetic and we didn't know, and the candy either causes their condition to spike. And then, you know, we've got a, a health issue. And I, I do think, just to be on the safe side, what we want is, we want for students to keep their lunch to themselves, you know, to, to try to the best of their ability not to share their lunch. And we certainly have an expectation that staff is not going to provide candy to, to students.
And I think part of this was, was the incentive, the, the, right? This really goes to food and, food rewards and incentives. And it's like,
Correct.
Read 10 books this year. I'm going to give you a candy bar for every 10 books you read. I, I, and I fully agree with, with not using food as an incentive.
So, so I would also just add to, to what Dr. Bryce was saying that, so, I suppose it might technically be, what you just described might technically be a violation of this policy, right? But there's nothing in this policy that provides a consequence for that violation, right? And there's nothing in, I don't think anyway. I don't have this entire Student Code of Conduct memorized, but I don't think that there's anything in the Student Code of Conduct that provides a consequence for a violation of that nature.
Absolutely not.
Along the lines of what Ms. Riche was saying earlier, the, then, this is a policy that is a tool that the adults in the building could, could use to further the goal that Dr. Bryce was just describing. You say, hey, you know, we have a policy against that. You're not going to get written up for it. You're not going to get in trouble for it. But it's a, it's a, it's a tool more than it is.
I agree. Thank you. My, when I discussed this policy at home, just as an anecdote, my children are horrified that I'm the one that is bringing up all of these.
And to be, and to be honest, I gave it to my two to read on their way to go camping, and, and I got back, ugh! And I don't get, what are you talking about? No way. So.
I mean, I get it. These are all valuable things. But I'm like, look, we can do better by our kiddos. We can be more creative in the way we incentivize them. It doesn't have to be, you know, doesn't have to be filled with sugar. And I like what Dr. Bryce said too, that we have to be mindful of allergies or other medical conditions that might be triggered or exacerbated. So, I think, as with most policies, we need to do a better job of making sure the staff and students are aware of these policies and what they say. To also add on to what Mr. Remo said is that there aren't punishments associated with this. But again, this is a big unwieldy policy that has to meet, you know, a litany of state rules, federal rules, statutes, you name it. So, this thing is, this thing is an albatross.
Yeah. I, I agree. Again, only two more comments to top of page six, and I'm, I'm going on wording. It is strongly encouraged that when school-wide celebrations include food, a licensed food service provider is utilized, but it's not required. Because I go back to the, the elementary movie night where they might bring in pizza from Bristol House of Pizza or popcorn from, so it is after the school day. It is past one hour after the school day. So, I'm assuming that the pizza and the popcorn are allowed. It's kind of a fundraiser, but I think the fundraiser is the movie night. So, so I don't know how that fits. But then, again, it's encouraged but not required so that the PTO doesn't need to now go contract separately with Chartwells to come and distribute food. Is that, is that true? Or is the intent that we're going to go to a food service vendor to, to provide pizza?
I could just add, maybe it's not worded as clearly as it could be, but I think the intent is more, if you think about a group that wanted to have a cookout at school, and now we have the concern of how the food is prepared? Is it cooked well enough? Was the food stored properly, that sort of thing? So, in some instances, it is safer to hire a licensed food service provider than to have families making things that come in, we don't know how they're prepared. And sometimes we don't know what the contents are. So, again, going back to the food allergies. So, that's why we put it strongly encouraged, but we certainly wouldn't want to require because that would, you know, significantly limit things. So, that's a very touchy area because we know so many people like to do potluck things, bringing food in. But at the same time, we would ask them to think about, you know, if, if it's possible to have a food service provider take care of that to ensure food safety standards.
Okay. Because I'll go back to the concessions.
I just want to weigh in for a second.
Yeah.
So, this is, this is basically, I would say, a policy of best practices. So, so it's not, it's not meant to be a punitive, like people are going to be walking into classrooms, you know, telling teachers, you know, what they can and cannot do in their class. It's not, it's just not meant to be a punitive policy, which is why you don't see long lists of consequences in there. It's, it's, it's meant to be a policy with guidelines, best practices, because if those best practices are followed, the understanding is that those things that Dr. Bryce was referring to are less likely to happen. Such as someone having a, a, you know, potentially very harmful allergic reaction in a classroom.
So, then, along those lines, do we think that it's important to outsource things such as the concession stand at the high school football games? Where they're kind of rotating hot dogs in the back or they've gotten hamburgers from somewhere? Is that, is that, is that a big enough of a, of an event that's an ongoing thing? That, that's something that we would ask the boosters to look at outsourcing the concession stands?
No, I think the boosters is separate. I think it's past that hour after school that we're talking about, right? And, and please, Adam or Carly, whoever worked up.
This one didn't look like it had a, a timeframe on it. It's just, it's when school-wide celebrations include food, a licensed food service provider in a football game or a sporting event seemed like a school-wide.
I just don't think that's the intent of this policy to be that far-reaching, would be my, would be my personal thought on that.
That, that's also my understanding. And, and to be perfectly honest, as I'm talking, hearing and listening to all of this food service stuff is, who knows? This might be completely moot when we look at COVID and how we're going to be handling this, at least in the upcoming school year. So, I'm hearing your points and I appreciate them. And I think it is probably important to figure out where this starts and where this stops. Brian, you know, you should be coming to our policy and curriculum subject.
Yeah. You should have no, no, no excuses, right?
More to the health and wellness meetings, really.
Here we go.
Tell you all to be careful what you wished for when Brian was on policy.
Those meetings went very, very late. Every, every time. The only other thing that I, the only other question that I had was that we're, we're asking our building principals to work with the subcommittee to document compliance. That's in section five with all provisions. Are we providing them, is there going to be an, an exhibit to the policy that provides them a standard way to document compliance? Or, or is it going to be up to the principal's discretion on how they document compliance?
Yeah. I, I actually think it's less about the principals and more about the district having the right forms in place. And so, I'll give you an example. So, if, if, if the PTO at a school wanted to conduct some sort of fundraiser that was going to be held in the building on a Friday evening, they would have to fill out a building use form, but they would also have to provide information about what is going to take place. And, oh, there's, there's food being provided. I think we probably need to spend some time over the summer making sure that we have an explanation of what food is going to be provided, how they're going to maintain the, the safety of the food so that it doesn't potentially cause illness. And, and people that use our building, whether they be the PTO or other groups, are required to have a, an insurance, insurance coverage. And so, I think we just need to make sure that all of those things are in place in the rare event that something untoward were, were to occur.
If I could just follow up on that, there also is a self-assessment tool that goes with this for schools to reflect on how well they are following the policy. And that comes to the Health and Wellness Subcommittee when we review this. And when it comes time for updates, we, we look at areas where it's problematic and how we might need to adjust things. So, I, I, in that section there, that's what I was thinking and that it's more that self-reflection tool as far as documenting compliance. So, as a Health and Wellness Committee, we are documenting compliance. We're working with schools to see what areas of the, of the policy they are meeting and which areas are problematic.
Thank you for bringing that up. Neglected to remember that.
Anyone else have any other questions on this policy or comments?
Well, I guess, do we want to amend the policy to Adam's suggestions about the "ors" in D1 at the bullets?
We can do that, but I don't, I don't think that's the kind of a, I don't, I'm not sure, and Mary Ann can weigh in.
That's just a grammatical change. You don't need to amend the policy.
Okay. Because it's just copy editing, really. Okay. Doesn't change the intent of the policy. Does that make sense, Brian? I mean, I see what you mean, but it's just.
It changed the intent for me when he, when he said that there were supposed to be "ors". But, but I, I will, I will defer to counsel.
Okay. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Thank you. Next recommendation, Mr. Saviano?
Yes. Recommendation S. 2020-18, that the school committee, upon the recommendation of the superintendent and supported by the Budget Facilities Subcommittee, accept the first student transportation bid.
Approved. I'll second it, but the, the reading says approve.
Aye. Aaron, do you want to?
So, I'm guessing, so it does, it does say approve because that's generally the language that we use. And I think that we can approve the bid because it says bid on there. For clarification for the public, did I get motions for discussion?
Motion for discussion, Madam Chairwoman?
When you get a first and a second, then you go to discussion. So.
I didn't hear a first and a second, so I'm just, just checking.
Don't boot.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Second.
So, so now we're in the discussion phase. And so, just the nuance here for the public is that the contract with first students still needs to be negotiated. The school committee tonight is being asked to accept the bid. So, that, that's where we're at with this.
And Madam Chair, if I may, and, and Ms. Fogel may want to jump in, but we are going into this with a number of other school districts. So, like you said, I, I believe this is between ourselves, Barrington, Tiverton. I think Portsmouth pulled out, so I don't think that they're part of this any longer as well. But it is an East Bay RFP that was let, and this was the bid. And what we're doing tonight is approving the bid that was recommended to the Budget and Facility Subcommittee, which is the alternate one cost, which is one of the alternates. The, the bid came in with two alternates and, and we are looking at one of those. So, the total bid price for, that we're voting on this evening is for $2,164,849.49 for the 2021 school year.
Point of order, Madam Chairwoman?
Yes, John.
I believe that the, the word is supposed to be just to accept their bid and that we will be then, at that point, starting negotiations with them. I don't think that we were, we were supposed to be actually accepting the bid that, that they've made and, and adopting it just like for, for with.
Okay. Mary Ann.
I, I need to, I need to agree with John. I was going to beep in. You're not accepting a number tonight. You are simply accepting the bid award where they told you how much it was going to be per bus and how much it was going to be per day. We are not accepting a total amount at this point. We don't have a contract to do that.
Okay. My, my fault then.
My question, I just want to clear this up before I move on with the discussion. So, John did read that with the word "accept the bid", which is correct, right?
Right. He's accepting, we are accept, I'm sorry. We are accepting their bid proposal. We are not voting on an amount that would be part of a, of a contract. In fact, there's not going to be a total amount in any contract that we accept. It'll be so much per bus, per day that you will be approving.
I just want to make sure there's not an issue with.
Correct, John.
That was used.
So, we.
Up. March?
I also, I just said approve, John, because that was what was written on the.
I know, but wrong.
I don't disagree with accept. But the other thing that I wanted to correct was that the East Bay Consortium goes out to bid for first students. But first student bids, different bids, depending on which school district they're bidding on and what their requirements are. So, to say that we all accepted one bid is not.
That's, that is true.
That's right. But that, that's, I mean, yes, we go out with other schools. We do that for a lot of things. But whatever they quoted for Barrington is not what they quoted for us. So, I, I didn't think that.
We still, to the best of my knowledge, we still have to negotiate.
Correct. That's what I was trying to say, John.
Yes. Thank you so much. Thank you.
But I did want to, I did want to point out, though, that there was a bid, a, a, a base bid cost, and then there were two alternates that were provided that had stipulations attached to them. And so, so you kind of are approving a number because you're not approving the base bid. You're, we're recommending approval of an alternate.
No. Not to the best of my knowledge.
We are, we are, the Budget and Facility Subcommittee recommended alternate one cost.
Madam Chairwoman?
That was my understanding, John.
Okay. So, we are accepting a bid? Because we got to bring Mary Ann back in this.
We, that is what we just said. We are accepting, we are, the superintendent has recommend, recommended that we accept the first student transportation bid.
Correct. Which includes two alter.
Correct.
That's how it's worded.
That, that is not what our attorney's saying.
Mary Ann.
All right. What I am saying is, you are accepting a bid proposal. They had it alternate one and alternate two. There was one that was agreed to. But we are not agreeing to a bottom number because that can't be approved at this time.
That's right.
That is correct.
I believe that is what the recommendation says.
And I, and Madam Chair, I may have misspoken and called out what the, what, what the alternate one total bid price was. And that may have been an error. My apologies.
Okay. Is there anyone else who has any questions or comments? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Thank you. And the, the last item under superintendent's recommendation. Um, and the, the last item under Superintendent's Recommendations and Issues is a vehicle disposal update. Jonathan?
Yep, so uh, Madam Chair, just wanted to share with uh, members of the, uh, the school committee that we uh, posted uh, for uh, the ability to sell a van uh, that we had that we were no longer using, that is no longer operable. We received a bid of $165.50. We are going to, I'm going to accept that, and I just wanted to share that information with the school committee.
Thank you. Does any, does, Marge?
Yeah, I, I have a question. I saw that bid in the Providence Journal. That bid, um, bid request in the Providence Journal probably costs us more than what they're paying for the van. So my, my question is, are we still required to advertise in the Providence Journal or are, and that would be up to, to Mary Ann to tell me, or whether we can just, no?
But it was board polit, uh, school.
It is school committee policy.
Yeah.
We, I, we answered that the last time. You've got it in a policy when we discussed the disposal of this vehicle of several meetings ago.
Then Mrs. Rees, could you put that on your agenda for checking that? Cuz I think there's a, the state relaxed their rules a little on where you had to advertise.
Okay.
That was just an aside, I mean, uh, whatever.
Okay, so are there, oh, Mr. Cabral?
Yes, um, Baj, I agree with you at the expense of, of this vehicle. It's costing us more money than it's worth. Um, Jonathan, I just wanna ask, uh, do we still have insurance on that vehicle? Please?
We do not have insurance.
On any of them?
Uh, we do not, and we are not paying any type of licensee, licensing um, renewal fee.
They're not registered.
That's why we are moving very quickly to dispose of them.
Well, a short period of time ago, it was still insured, correct?
Correct.
So now you're telling us that it's not insured at all, right?
We have, we have not uh, made a, uh, any type of payment uh, to continue insurance on any of the three vehicles that we are attempting to dispose of.
All right, now, uh, we, we got a bid on one. What about the other two? Where, where are they going?
So uh, we have not received any bids on the other two. Um, and so we're gonna look at the policy again to see what other options we have, and we're gonna see if we can dispose of them uh, this summer.
Haven't had Johnny Francis come down there and give you a, a price.
No, we have not.
Call him if you want me to, you know?
We have not.
Just to get them out of our hair.
Yes, that's what we want. We wanna dispose of them.
All right. And this, by the way, I have to bring it in front of the public. This should have been at least five years ago. This should have been taken care of, and I know you weren't here. But I was a taxpayer in this, in this town, and we were paying insurance and registration for three vehicles that could not get on the road. Rumor has it, one of them actually broke down out of state, but I'm not sure that's true. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, so if there are no other questions or comments about that update, we can move on to Subcommittee Reports and Initiatives, um, starting with Carly for Policy and Curriculum.
Sounds good. Let me check my notes. They are buried behind my other Wellness Committee notes. Okay. It's been a busy meeting without my notes. All right, we're calling our next Policy and Curriculum Subcommittee meeting this coming Thursday, which is the 25th, at 6:00 PM. We have not met in a long time, and we're happy to get back sort of on track and take care of some, some important business. We will be reviewing uh, the DIC policy that was discussed in the last Budget and Facility Subcommittee. I know we need to change some titles. We will also be creating our new hiring policy to reflect the um, the changes in law that gave additional powers to the superintendent about, about hiring, but the school committee still will be offering contracts. We have some updating to do around that. We will also be taking up the chairwoman's initiative of getting a policy together for a rep to the school committee. So we would love to see you there. Yes, Mr. Saviano?
Yes, Madam Chairwoman. My question to you is, I just want a little clarification. You're saying we're gonna, we're not gonna do it virtually, we're gonna do it in person?
Oh, no, I wish. It will be virtually. Thank you for the clarification. I, I thought that was assumed. My bad.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much.
No problem.
Okay, um, you all set? Carly?
I am, thank you.
Okay, um, and next is Brian with Budget and Facilities.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, our next um, Budget and Facility Subcommittee will be next Monday. It'll be a virtual meeting. Um, I'm guessing probably around 6:30. Um, there are a number of uh, actions that we need to take um, prior to the end uh, of the fiscal year. Uh, line item adjustments, assignment of fund balance, and uh, and those types of things. Uh, so we're putting our agenda together. Uh, all are welcome. You should see that agenda uh, come out later in the week. And uh, again, all are welcome. Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Um, Adam with Personnel and Contract Negotiation. Oh, I'm sorry, Victor, go ahead.
Uh, Brian, how are we doing with the fields behind the high school?
We're gonna be talking about that as well. I've, I've asked Dr. Bryce to put uh, necessity of construction on the agenda. Um, I, I, it's not on this agenda, but we could, we could probably talk to it. I think we've met the uh, the percentage requirements needed to receive the full reimbursement. Uh, I, I spoke with uh, um, Mr. Simmons a couple weeks ago. Uh, so we'll, we'll have an update on all of our necessity of construction projects um, as well as reimbursements we expect to get, uh, to ensure that we're not leaving any money on the table.
Is that, does that come under Tina's, uh, pros or is it George's?
It's actually under Tina because she's the chief operating officer.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Tina.
Okay, thanks, Brian. Um, Adam, Personnel and Contract Negotiations?
Sure, um, so we don't have anything currently on the books, although we will be having a meeting very soon. We continue to be in negotiation with the WEA for a new contract. Um, and uh, we're gonna be working towards trying to get that done over the summer. Stay tuned for when those meetings get scheduled.
Mr. Cabral?
Yes, the topic that I wanted to bring up earlier that you, that I could not because of, uh, it was under the other area. Um, I just wanna make a comment on the fact that Jonathan has called back most of the people uh, that were laid off. And I, I have to compliment him on that specifically because I know several districts that that's not happening. And we had a district that was really anxious. We, I mean, really emotionally upset in many, many areas. And, and they got these letters, and they were, again, the governor would not let us go another month, and we had to give these people, and they were all upset over it. We had to explain many times as to what the reason was. Now, they, we're, we're now in, in the middle of June, and they can actually start breathing a, a sigh of relief that, that they will have employment next year. Now, Jonathan, my question is, how many did we call back? And is there any that will not be called back?
Yes, um, thanks for the question. So we actually called back 19 out of the 21 that we actually gave uh, the notices to. The two that we did not call back were individuals that were in one-year positions only. And the reason why we gave them um, the notice is because it allows them to have um, recall rights if we have, if we create the same position. Um, and instead of uh, having to go and find um, a, a brand-new teacher to fill that spot, they would be first, those two individuals would be first on the recall list um, that we would contact before we would go, um, go out to the public. I think, um, the other thing that I would say is, um, thank you very much to all of our staff, uh, to all of our parents uh, in the community there. You know, I, I certainly, I think we all certainly received a number of emails that were cons, uh, that were just asking us to reconsider um, that stress the importance of these individuals uh, in the lives of young people and what they are doing to help our young people become academically and socially, emotionally successful. Um, so I, I certainly am very pleased that uh, the school committee was able to take that recommendation, that we believe that the numbers are right. Um, certainly, we can't forget the uh, Joint Finance Committee, both town uh, councils that have voted. Um, the last one, I think, was June the 4th to approve their budgets um, based on what they told us in March. Um, and we now have uh, much clearer indication of how much money we will receive from um, the state initially. Um, and we hope that it will increase over time. So we, we feel very confident in being able to bring our young people, excuse me, bring our staff back.
Uh, I, I, John, I'm gonna let you go, but I think we have to be careful because we're kind of in that zone of.
I, I understand. I'd just like, I'd just like to ask, I thought that one of the 21 retired. Am I wrong about that?
Yeah, we don't have anyone on the, uh, on the list of the 21 that retired, not to our knowledge. And, and it's been on that list for, uh, you know, every day.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Um, and Adam, would you do the wellness update for us, please?
Sure, um, so the Wellness Committee had a meeting, I don't know exactly when it was, about, about a week and a half ago, um, where we had a presentation on the Health and Wellness Curriculum that was recently amended and modified. And it was a K through 12 presentation on what the curriculum entails. It is part of an overall initiative spearheaded by, by a number of people, including uh, Chair Schofield, Ms. Rees, myself, others on the Health and Wellness Subcommittee, to make sure that we're taking a look at how we're teaching uh, health, both from a physical perspective and from uh, a social, emotional, and mental health wellbeing perspective, so that we can keep our eyes on whether we're using materials that are the most up-to-date materials and not outdated. And we can be, uh, sort of, I, I would say, a resource as a Subcommittee to ensure that we're placing an appropriate emphasis on that health and wellness curriculum in the schools. That was a good first step. We had a really productive meeting with a lot of discussion about what is being done and different ways that we can continue to try and tweak that curriculum going forward. And that's been a principal initiative over the last bit of time for the Health and Wellness. Is there anything that I missed? Uh, Ms. Rees?
No, thank you very much. I think that was a very kind of complete picture of what we're trying to do. We just, it was time to take a peek and make sure, as you said, that we're serving our kiddos with the most up-to-date information to keep them safe, not only physically, but mental health. And, and also, we had a rather robust discussion about um, how we teach our children about um, development and sexual wellbeing and sexual health. So thank you.
Thank, thank you, Adam and Carly. And just to, um, just to let everybody know, the Wellness Committee um, is a little bit different from the other subcommittees, so that the public understands, the Wellness Committee would approach this, would come to the school committee and present any changes or updates that would be made to any kind of a curriculum or programming. So that everyone would know about it. Thank you. Okay, I, I think Dr. Bryce just had a couple more words. Marge, did you have something on that?
No, I'll let him speak. Then I was gonna motion to adjourn, that's all.
We just have one thing.
Yep, so um, I would like to take a moment and to share with the um, school committee and the entire BWRSD um, district that we, today, the school committee has appointed Miranda Carpenter as the principal at Hugh Hugh Cole Elementary. So can we just give her a round of applause? I think she's here somewhere. Um, and so just, you know, very pleased at, at how the year's gone. We believe that she's the right leader for the right time. Um, and we're very pleased that she has agreed to uh, accept the appointment. So thank you very much, school committee.
I second, third, and fourth that. With that, I would love a motion to adjourn.
You got it.
Turn second.
Okay, all in favor? All opposed? Thank you. Thanks so much, everyone, for coming.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Bye-bye.